Thank you for your patience. Today is Tuesday, January 18th, and this is our regular school board meeting. We are starting at 6:15. And again, I apologize for the delay. Board members present, we have members Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Holloman, Higgins, Donley, and Bellamy. We also have Dr. Bishop, our superintendent, as well as Katie Grant, our recording secretary. And with that, we will ask that our student representative lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and when you're ready, we can do the land acknowledgements.
On behalf of the Anchorage School Board, I want to take a moment to recognize and offer gratitude for the sacred ancestral lands of the Denina people. We acknowledge and appreciate that our offices, facilities, and schools are on these sacred indigenous lands, and we honor the traditional care that has been given to this land throughout generations. We are grateful for the opportunity to grow, learn, work, and create educational communities on this sacred land. We extend continued respect for the many cultures, creativity, and the resilience of this indigenous people. Chinon.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Let the record also show that Ms. Shaw is here today as part of our deus. And that brings us to the approval of the agenda.
Madam President, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd move to move, I think it's memorandum 80, to the non-consent agenda.
Memorandum 80, the CIP?
Yes, I actually voted against that at a previous meeting, so I'm not consenting to it.
Oh, so you want, so what is your, you want to pull it?
Yes.
Okay. So then it would go to an action item. That will be F1? Is there a second on pulling that item?
Well, Madam, sure, I don't think it's even a debatable motion because it's on the consent agenda.
Yeah, you are correct. Any member may pull a consent agenda at any time. Thank you. Okay. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Thank you, Member Donley. Okay, see none. We have pulled, we have pulled memorandum 80, which now moves it to an action item under F. That'll be F1. Are there any objections? Any other, I don't see any other adjustments to the agenda, just that one. So with that one adjustment.
Do we pull memorandum 069 from non-action for discussion?
We can do that when we get to action items, yes. Just when we get there, you can pull that in. Okay, seeing no other, the adjustment to the, we have one adjustment to the agenda. Are there any, is there any opposition to making that adjustment, pulling memorandum 80? Seeing none. The agenda stands approved with that item.
Madam President, we do have action that on December 6th, the CIP was approved. So I'm just curious about why it's up there again, even with, it was approved even with, you know, a disapproval, if you will, or not a vote for nay. So I was just curious how it moved forward. Has it changed? May I request why?
Sure.
So through the President, the board did act and approve the Six Year Capital Improvement Plan at the 6th December meeting. The reason why it was brought forward again is the district did receive the enrollment projections from our demographer. So, you know, I'll take this one. It probably is not in the right place. Maybe it would just be a report to the board that we have additional information that is being added to the packet that will be distributed to the board when we print off the hard copy Six Year Capital Improvement Plan. So again, it's already been approved.
So it was a technical edit due to student enrollment numbers being added to the packet. And it showed back up. It should have probably been non-action with, just for board discussion. May we move it at this point? I would suggest that it be placed on non-action because it doesn't need an additional vote. Would that suffice? Madam President, I'm not sure how the procedures work, but perhaps asking a member who made the motion and the second to that, if it could be moved on non-action?
My understanding is Mr. Donley does not agree to the item on the consent agenda. So he wants to vote against it a second time. Or if not, then I would like the member to explain.
I don't think it's appropriately placed on the consent agenda because all the members of this board do not consent with it. If it's simply a notification of a change in the fact pattern that's represented in the memorandum, that can be done someplace other than the consent agenda.
I understand. Okay.
And Madam President, my request and recommendation would be the non-action to be discussed if needed. Member?
Member Donley, right now, I made the decision to put it in action, which really is an error. It needs, I would like to move it to non-action. Okay?
I have no objection.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification, Dr. Bishop. I appreciate the input.
Madam President, I did try to reach out to your office earlier today and let you know of his concerns.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Alrighty, so we have, we still have just that one item pulled. It is now under, it will be non-action number four, G4. Thank you. All right. Moving right along, I'd like to read my opening statement, since I overlooked that, just real briefly, real quickly. But we do want to welcome everyone to our meeting, and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the school board and the district. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. And that brings us to item B1. Do we have a Student Advisory Board report today?
We do.
Thank you. Ms. Shaw?
Okay, so SAB, or Student Advisory Board, had held their fifth meeting of the school year on Tuesday, January 11th, at 8:15 a.m. To start off our meeting, we played a fun gathering activity in periods of three. We approved the agenda in the minutes from our December meeting, and then we were visited by Ms. Doreen Brown about the graduation regalia. Earlier in the year, she spoke to us about voting on which option we think was best, and she came back with the results that was like the option that was mostly favored by SAB past. So we were very excited to hear that. We then talked about the upcoming positions that will open up for elections in the spring, and then went into school reports where we asked each school to share a challenge their school is struggling with. Then we went on a Zoom call with Michael Collins from Ray and Associates, and answered questions about, you know, what we want to see in the next superintendent, what qualities we like, what we don't like, and questions like that. And then we had Mr. Andrew Ball come in and present the calendar for the next school year, talk about what kind of changes we would like to see, you know, what changes we would make, wouldn't make. And he gave us a Google form to fill out. It was a very busy meeting, but a fun and informational one, to say the least. SAB will be meeting February 15th at 11:15 a.m. to 1:15 p.m. The week before, four SAB members head down to Juneau for the AASB Conference or the Association of Alaska School Boards. That is all.
And thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Shaw? Thank you. Very good report. Appreciate it. And now that brings us to item C1, reading proficiency. And I need to pull my notes out here. Okay, we're now going to have our progress monitoring conversation. Tonight's conversation is on goal number one, specifically interim goal 1.1. And that goal, as you can see on the screen, interim goal 1.1, the percentage of K2 students at or above reading, at or above the reading benchmark on interim assessments. Fast bridge curriculum-based measures will increase from 35, 37.5% in the spring of 2021 to 80% in the spring of 2020. I would like to first of all confirm that the report clearly shows what is being monitored. That report was shared at our last meeting. It focuses on the specific interim goal. The report also shows the data for three previous reporting periods, reporting period, and the target reporting periods. The report shows the superintendent's evaluation of performance, and the report also shows reporting documentation that evidences the superintendent's evaluation via the tables and graphs provided. And the report indicates next steps. So with those four components present, we are ready to begin our conversation. So for the purposes of understanding the current reality of our students, we are going to start out with our who, what, and why questions. And once the board fully understands the current reality, then we will move on to the how. That's a category of questions that where the superintendent will share with us what is planned in response to the data. So with that logic in mind, we'd like to open it up for questions. And I guess who wants to go first tonight? Member Donley?
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Bishop, in January of 2019, if I'm remembering, we had a report from a contractor that the district hired that visited our classrooms to examine the status of our reading curriculum. It seems like ages ago now, it was right before COVID hit us. And at that time, my memory is when I asked that it was, that there was a correlation between our classrooms and schools that had adopted the current reading curriculum and success, that those schools were actually, and classrooms were succeeding more, the ones that had not adopted the new curriculum adopted by the board. Is my memory accurate about that?
That's a good question. And that timeline of actions, and we were, you know, had adopted it one year, did some PD, we're moving into the second year, that was when we worked with someone to do classroom observations, kind of walkthroughs of implementation snapshots, we call it. And it's not an evaluation, it's literally looking in the classroom to see if is what we believe should be happening with instruction happening. That was halted because of, we didn't do any further work on that. But there is evidence that implementation, or just instruction really, does matter. And so if that's your question, I'd have to go back for that specific in 2019, what was said when. But if the bigger picture is when there's a plan that moves forward and it's implementing with a goal that kids do better, we have evidence of that from the summer, from summer school. So I would say yes. But I, just specifically, I'd have to go back to that exact conversation to see.
So let's try to focus our questions on our monitoring report, and I will capture all other questions that you may have that might not be connected to the monitoring report. Member Donley, you've already asked a question.
Well, I just wanted to explain why that was directly related to the monitoring.
I'm not indicating that it wasn't, but I wanted to, I wanted us to focus on this data tonight. Thank you. Member Lessons?
Yeah, maybe a two-part question. One is maybe definitional. If you could please make or clarify whether high growth is the same as catch-up growth, or if those are two different things.
That's a great question. High growth, or stretch growth, or catch-up growth, is they're all the same, same, one of the same things. And what we look for is that, just so everyone knows, a student that scores at the 50th percentile, that would be the normal year-to-year growth, that when you're with us, you're learning a year for a year. Catch-up growth has been if a student in their growth of how much they've gained falls about the 70th percentile, that would be one and a half times approximately of making up the learning that was missed. So catch-up growth, stretch growth, high growth are different ways to talk about how students are learning more than just a year for a year.
The second part of that question, I want to begin with a glass half full, and I'd love to know what went well for the 187 first graders who did achieve that high growth. It was a real small subset, but it's a little success story. So I wonder if you could illuminate what you think went well for those 187 students in first grade?
Sure. So at this point in time, just digging, you know, down deep, it's very difficult to pick out, we did not study those 167, because it truly is for classrooms to find out, like to schools. It just kind of tells us a story of data. That's what data do. They say, look at this, and then they don't necessarily answer questions for you. We call them, what is they called, the deep five whys, because they make you have five more questions. I want to share, and some of the hypothesis around first grade versus kindergarten, and how the other grades did so well, is really the exceptional, skill-based turning point, tipping point in first grade. First grade is so important. And what our first graders have shared, and some of our principals, when we've asked them, is the hypothesis of that kindergarten is truly missing that subset of skills that makes them successful in first grade. That, along with what's been shared with us, and just the behavior ability to do school and attend a task and have that self-agency, our first grade teachers, above all, are saying, really, they feel as though, and especially those that have taught kindergarten, feel as though the first graders coming in are like kindergartners they've had in the past because of the Zoom. When we looked at summer school, and we were able to make some ground with those kindergartners, it did demonstrate that they were picking up on those skills specifically. But there is a large subset of skills that were just missing. And to be honest, first grade has more subset of skills to put you on a path to read than any other grade level. But just so you know, teachers shared things like the behaviors, and just the differences in having kids learn how to do school. So it's just attending to a task, really, high levels of stress in students where they would kind of, what we would call a tantrum, you know, so the teacher would have to address the tantrum. That was a challenge, and they're finding it. Again, first grade is when you crack the code, so to speak, of sounds and letters. But we've heard here that from a teacher of a grade level, that she did share that she doesn't know what her kids know or not, and she felt as though some of the process of learning sounds was the mask that she doesn't know who's responding and who's not. So there was a, I mean, there's a long list, but in essence, first grade is just so incredibly important. But you see the makeup growth, and a good portion of kids is good. But we saw that too as an anomaly. And so thank you for picking that out, and we just did pose that question back. And those were some of the answers we received.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Other questions? This is for the fall to winter growth, at the end of the report, the catch-up growth. Member Jacobs?
Following up, but it sounds like maybe the answer is no. Do we, do we know anything about the students who experienced high growth in terms of a correlation with attendance rate being above average this year, or if that population also shared attendance at our summer school this past year? Was there correlation there?
Yeah, that question did come from a couple of board members. So I looked into it. And I do want to share just some, some understanding of attendance. And we have found success. If we could look at, if you could pull up an additional slide that I presented before, Dee Cathy, just kindergarten and first grade. We have an understanding that attendance does matter. And then we're trying to say, well, but how much does it matter? And for which child does it matter? We certainly found in summer school, the blue is the number of kids who showed academic growth, percent of kids. So if you look at Baxter, 75% of all the kids showed growth, but only 41% went 90% of the time. So some schools showed greater differences than others. And so we know that attendance matters. Of course it matters. Attendance of adults matters, attendance of children's matters. But then we want to say, for whom and for how much does that affect? And so for first grade, we saw very similar evidence. So then what we did was just take a look, we don't have this for fast bridge, but we did do a look at, well, we do have for second grade in a different exam. So this is fast bridge for the curriculum-based measure in reading. That's what CBMR means. And they are literally reading to get this. And if you take a look, this is district-wide second grade. And on the left, it's the percent of increase from fall to winter, or the growth, okay, of kids learning. And along the, the other axes, you'll see 80, 82, 84, 86. That is the percent of students present, the attendance rate, if you will. And we've found that our schools, and I'll give you this slide as well, our schools are all over the place. And so this is district-wide second graders, every school that has a second grade. But I can't answer it district-wide because the questions don't necessarily reside with me, because our kids and our programs and what they're experiencing are different. So here's one school with these same data. So they took the same attendance data. All of this is one dot on the prior map. So now this is a school of second grade, and theirs has a pretty evenly distributed group of attendance rates with a pretty evenly distributed group of growth. It's not that different. We opened them, because we're trying to answer this question about attendance, then we opened up another school and dug deeper. And check this out, there wasn't a problem with attendance, and the growth and non-growth was just about equal. Now, questions that they would do, literally what they do is say, what, what's the story behind this? And then they would say, are the top kids in, in MTSS, are the top kids in one of the teacher's classes? What's happening there? They would just process through question and answers at the level where they are, to really understand where their kids are. And schools that are really, really good at this, that have trust relations with their principals and each other, go to, oh, my gosh, show me what you're doing because you're getting the success. We still do have schools, to Member Donley's point, where the teacher says, I don't want anyone coming into my room. And so therein lie the whole gamut of instructors and what we're dealing with. Here's another second-grade classroom at another school. And so even with high attendance, they don't have as many people succeeding and making that growth. And then the next school, we just pulled four schools to say, is there a pattern? And we'd have to say, boy, it's really localized. And so does attendance matter? Yes. But there's probably, whom does it matter for most? I would say as a parent, I have taken my, and have taken my child with me to go to the event. They miss school, and it was a decision of mine. We have students missing quite a bit for sports, hockey, soccer, anything that has its own comp, they miss. We have students missing school because they're sick. We have students missing school because they oversleep. So, or their home life is difficult and they didn't get up. So what we need to do then is at each individual school, take a look and go, okay, let's drill down even more. And what is the story of our kids and what's happening in our classes? We know what to do, and we have the tools. It's just what can we influence in that regard? So that, those were great questions, and it took us a really long time. Thank you for giving them, because we kept digging and digging and found quite a bit different outcomes at different places in different schools. So these data really belong then at the, at the building level to just talk about, what do they think is happening?
And I guess kind of along those same lines, what happened in, I mean, in summer school, that kids just soared, a lot of kids, just absolutely, they did well. So what was happening then that's not, that is the same thing happening now that happened in summer school relative to the, well, I know they're not getting bogeys off to do the thing.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, yeah. So they went to school for four days and then discussed data on the fifth day. So they had more time to do this, certainly work as a team. There was a direct instructional focus in summer school, that, and a goal that said, our kids just spent almost a year online, we have to make up time, especially in these early skills. We narrowed it down and said, this is what we're going to teach because kids need it. And then there was an instructional model. All staff were trained in it, they bought into it, they came in and taught. Now, the elephant in the room is the pandemic. The instruction was the same, the instructors were the same. What we're having right now, I mean, I honestly want to say that it doesn't necessarily, we'd have to look at student absences mean something, but also staff absences, like right now, the consistency. And truly, we are just holding our heads above water to keep schools open, that we're doing what we can when we're here with staffing. And some folks aren't trained in it who sub. Like I've been a sub and always requested, put somebody who knows the, you know, the exact instructional model in the classroom, and I'll cover, you know, the substitutes or the electives, at least get the core information. So, I mean, it was great instruction, great learning, a focus, parent involvement. There was a letter home from parents, or notification to parents weekly of the progress. So there was lots of different things, it's hard to pin it down, but there is evidence that even with minimal or questionable attendance of students, gains can be made.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Okay, Carla, that answer your question?
It did.
All right.
And might I share, if we can go to the data, I want everyone to know specifically too, that when we retest or reassess mid-year, the goals for which we expect kids to have changed, and I shared it last time, it was about, and I wish I had my notes from last time, at the beginning of the year, in kindergarten, they were to know like three sounds and letters. And by mid-year, they're supposed to know upwards of almost 20. So it isn't that our kids haven't learned the longer they're with us, it's that they're trying to catch up, but the goalpost keeps moving for them. We don't expect stagnant ends, right? So the mid-year, what they had to do to be on grade level at the beginning of the year was a lot less than what they have to be on grade level at mid-year. So the idea that you see, oh, there's no growth, it doesn't mean there's no growth, it's just not the expected growth of pre-pandemic, because that's when the norms were created. So I just want to be clear about that, what's happening in our schools.
Great, thank you. Okay, continuing on, other questions? Anybody on this side? Anybody on this side? Member Donnelly, is that acquisitive eyes I see?
Yeah, can we go back to the chart that shows all the schools?
Sure, in second grade? I just pulled second grade because of the attendance question.
And what was the timeframe of this graph?
Exactly the same. It was this, the fall, the same time.
Fall to winter?
Fall to winter this year.
So the axis that is zero, horizontal across the chart, that is where the average?
Correct, that's.
Average increase of learning should be?
That's the expected.
The expected increase. So we've got the vast majority of our schools that are underperforming to the expectation and then a few that are overperforming. Is that accurate way to read this?
That's accurate. And we shared that. You can look at it in another way of the schools that were on target or near target in their report. So if you take a look at here, at the bottom.
Next one.
So if you look at the bottom, how many were below target at the beginning of the year? How many are below target now? How many are near target and how many are on target or above? As you can see, 51 schools are below target, one school near the target, 13 on target.
And are all of, some of our schools use alternative curriculum and use different reading curriculum, such as all the, I think, five schools? Are those schools represented on this chart also?
Yes, all schools are.
This is kind of a follow-up and maybe a companion to the 187 first grader question. So what, if anything, have you been able to distill about those 13 and one schools that remained on or near target in the winter assessment? It's a smaller group than achieved that in the fall.
So those were schools that are likened to all other, pretty much data that we have, generally lotteryed programs, generally white, non-Hispanic. So they liken other success targets. Wealth probably has the most to do to that or socioeconomic status. We know that it isn't just because you're lotteryed. If you're a parent, generally, parents at higher socioeconomic status are the ones lotterying. And so if you had to narrow it. We did find some other data, though, interesting. And on that, if I can share it, just in regard to movement and probably poverty has something to do with movement, if you could look at K. So this is interesting and I mentioned this. And I just heard on the radio this morning, so I want to get the report, the research article on it. But they not only said that it was SES, it was actually parents of, or children of older parents, which is interesting. So they said, even in the same socioeconomic category, if you're an older parent, your kid generally did better. And they basically shared the stress of the family of parent focusing on their career and having to get growing their career and buying a house and all those things that you happen as a young parent, that stresses off when you're older. So I haven't qualified it. I just heard about it today. But here's some data. This is now fourth through eighth grade, which has nothing to do with specifically FastBridge, but I just wanted to share it because we were able to capture it for something else and we just found it fascinating. So if you took all fourth through eighth graders on the fall MAP growth of 2021 and we targeted those that meet the 65th percentile, if you meet the 65th percentile on MAP with a 99% accuracy, we can predict that you're going to pass the peaks. You're going to be grade level on peaks, okay? So 65th percentile, if you hit that mark on MAP, you're pretty much 99%. If you take the assessment, you're going to pass peaks, you know, with some efficacy. Now, we know that if you've been in one school and not just in different, so fourth graders could be in a middle school or an elementary school. It just means one school in your matriculation, like one, you didn't move in a middle school or you didn't move. So I was in one elementary school and I was in one middle school. If that was you as a kid, you have 41% chance of being in that 65th percentile who passed peaks. If you had two schools in elementary or two schools in middle school, you moved two times, then you have a 38% chance. If you have moved three times in your education career from fourth through eighth grade or, you know, all the way through. Actually, it's starting from kindergarten, but if you had three, but we only had, we only assess this assessment in fourth through eighth graders. But if you had three moves in that education up until that time, you had a 33%. I mean, it is almost a stair step of moving, moving, moving. Hence, I mean, McKinney-Vento is a homeless grant that we try to keep the kids in the same schools. We pay for mileage to get. But what is movement and mobility in our district? It's about poverty more so than anything else. But even kids of non-poverty who moved actually struggled more than others. And so consistency, we can't control their movement, but we can control what we can control, which is curriculum, instruction, things like that. So I just thought this was fascinating because it was almost a perfect stair step. But it just goes to that attendance, movement, those outside factors. But a lot of those, we can't expect our teachers to affect those outside factors. It's unfair for us to do that. What we need to focus on is what we actually can affect and influence.
Good, thank you. That is, that's important. That is important because what we do as a district and how we, when kids move in our district from school to school, we should expect some kind of consistency as they move. And I know we can't control them moving, but when they get to us, do they have the same opportunities and they have, are they faced with the same barriers?
Yes, and some of the things we're doing to that is if they were in MTSS, we're trying to model or a WIN group, we're trying to share those data when they move with the new teacher so it doesn't take them two weeks to get the kid adjusted. It's like, oh, they were in this WIN group, they're falling behind on blended letters at the end of us a word. I mean, it gets that specific. You have blended letters at the front, blended letters at the end. They struggle with blended letters at the end of a sound. I'm going to put them in this group. So our teachers are really working together to communicate with each other. But again, these data were kids that didn't even leave the district. They are literally still in our system. Yeah. Well, questions? I nerd out on this stuff, so sorry. Member Jacobs.
Yeah, the moving the goalpost discussion, I guess, triggered another question. Is the, are the second half of our year, the curriculum, is it similarly ambitious or we might see other metrics the next time we review this data? Or do we anticipate to see an upward curve as students catch up to the aggressive nature of learning that's happening?
That's a great question. And just so you know, outside of these data with FastBridge and the younger kids, we do have areas in our district that kids were catching up. Like one of them, which I'm fascinated with and I want to find out, is the sixth grade. Sixth grade made up some time more than any other grade level. So we're going to, but this meeting wasn't about sixth grade. I would say if what is occurring right now with the manner in which we're working in schools continues through March, I would say no. And I specifically share that. Will they grow? Yes. Will they grow at the rate that we expect them to? No. Because being present matters, but also that works for both teachers and students. And we are being affected by Omicron in our working force as well, taking us out. And many times, you know, sub-plans are there, sometimes they're not. Sometimes it is exactly what the teacher would teach because from this building, we're sending out over 30 people a day with certificates that actually can teach. But this, you know, specifics, I know a little bit more about what is happening in the classroom. But as you know, in all over, there are many subs that just come in. I mean, I was, I had to, I had to adjust. I didn't understand the game that was written in the thing, but I could get enough about what we wanted the outcome to be. So then I changed the rules of the game and taught it and the kids let me know that. But, you know, I mean, it's daily, just working with young people. So the assessments are ambitious because we do expect, especially in these younger grades, for them to get them. They are single subset skills, literally like I just said, knowing sounds, being able to blend a word. They are very concrete and deliberate, but if they don't get them, it's very difficult in our system to get them later on.
I have a question on the page four, special ed. The, you know, while I think most of, the majority of our learners are below, far below or far below target, special ed, what are we doing to differently with special ed?
Sure.
Population of kids.
Thank you.
They are very, very low.
So with special education, a lot of times what we would like to do is to have really a more deliberate curriculum, which if you talk about direct instruction, where really where teachers are directly, you know, sharing, repeat after me, this is what we need to do. We call that big DI in our business, that it's more structured than not. And what we're finding is, is that sometimes being removed outside your peers is not keeping you in line with actually what needs to work. So we're, a few things, I mean, we are short of special education and generally, special education teachers are our newest teachers. So we're putting the kids with the biggest learning that needs to be done with the newest teachers. So something in the whole premise is difficult to work with. So within schools, they're working through WIN groups to really integrate the groups and not make it a special education, just make it based on the need. Like this is what they don't have, which teacher is teaching this during the WIN group that we can have. So changing of curriculum, changing of instruction, grouping models that are fluid that when, because we have special education kids who do know things and then they should be moved in fluid groups. So we're really working with that, and these are all best practices. They weren't designed by ASD. They're written in the literature as effective practices. And so among those, I would say, those are what we're doing. And I would call up either Taralisha Wayne, our senior director of special education, or Jenny Knudsen, who's the senior director of it all, to add any other information in regard to specifically special education, what types of things are we doing to intervene in the learning to change the trajectory?
Well, and I would just echo what you said, Dr. Bishop, because it needs to be tight, consistent instruction. And the more of a need that a student has, it's even more important that instruction is like that. And given the staffing shortage in the subs, that's not having consistency consistently. So we're trying to get people with that background in those classrooms so that we can have it as much as possible. But again, in our classrooms, we are looking at the needs of the student and the more intense of the need, the more explicit the instruction, the more scaffolding that there is and the tighter that the instruction is, is making sure we're following those priority plans. And that's what will get kids to move forward. And we're just facing some challenges around staffing right now. And we keep trying to problem solve with it with the resources we have.
Thank you. Next question. Member Lessons.
Thanks. I mean, I feel like we've danced around sort of the big, the elephant in the room. But if you could articulate, what is the cause of the decline overall in our K2 student reading this, you know, from fall to winter? You know, the drop from 41% to 34%? If you could just sort of point your finger and give it your best shot.
In this specific interim goal?
Yeah, in this, I mean, in this.
And just everything, yeah. So, I mean, we've shared some of those things and it started with the question about consistency of instruction, you know, with Mr. Donnelly. But staffing shortages, we've shared all these behavioral issues, instruction and teaching. But it really tells a story. And I'm going to just share some data that I shared with you the other day. And I've been thinking about it and how do, how do we share, how does this share a story of keeping our expectations in line with our focus? And so I'm just going to go to the overall data on peaks and just share with you kind of the momentum that we've had over time to just try to do my best. So you start in an area where you're not satisfied, you get a report. That year in 1617, for those of you that were here at the time, the spring, when we selected a reading series, we put it into action, we changed behaviors of teaching, we did professional development, but we also started assessment. There was a pushback on, I mean, there was time and time again, this room was filled with, this is too hard, we can't do this. At the same year, if you recall, we started to talk about the new standards. We hadn't implemented them and taught to the new standards in our district when they were adopted back in 2014 to start. So we were lagging that. We learned them, but our instructional models didn't match. Through that tough time, I mean, I would say that there was some growth year to year. There was huge growth. Then I want to share, this story tells where my focus went. And when I lose focus or change focus, I think it trickles down. It's what's important. I would tell you, an earthquake happened. My work was not talking with principals about student learning anymore. That took a secondary role. The conversations at this board were about which buildings FEMA getting a bond pass, which classrooms are hit, what happened, what are we doing about the mental health and safety? I mean, this is like the pandemic, that was a practice for me. So then what happens? We don't even take it again because of the pandemic and we're so, I would say that I'd never want to share that we're not focusing on student learning. But when outside things compete with the focus of me, my team then, who's not, they're focused on getting information about FEMA, not saying, hey, how are your learning data today and can you share that with me? And I would say while we're doing that, it's difficult because it is hard to go into a school and say, tell me about all your learning. I did happen to go to school the other day and she was just like, look what we did. I just want to show you that even now, look at what I did. And so I, I mean, the conversations are happening, but when we shift, I would say that what we expect doesn't necessarily get done. But data just tell a story. And the story right now, if we look at the ability to have consistent instruction over time, that's been with problems right now because of COVID and we all know it. Do I think we're doing the best we can with what we have where we are? Yes. Do I think that it's satisfactory that we're all satisfied, the teachers included, with student learning? No. But I'm hoping that we'll get back with the time because the selection committee for the, what is coming out time and time again, is the people that selected that book, I still remember, the 68 people on that team, it has stand the test of time with research because the reading bill is just up again, being discussed tomorrow, Senate finance next Wednesday. Like you've had some good progress made by the folks in, working through this to get there. And with that consistency and taking care of kids and taking care of our staff, I think we'll get there. But the story of our data right now is that I want to be hopeful that students will continue to learn, but we need to be realistic with how much they will due to all the barriers. And I'm just being honest with you. I hope that answers it. You know, it is the elephant in the room.
Okay, any other who, what, why questions? So let's move to, seems like we're ready to go to the how. How are we, what are we doing? What are we doing to, what's the future? Can you walk us through the graph on page seven?
Sure. So we have been training and working with folks as much as we can. However, our biggest training tool, because we know that our time outside of the school day is limited, is through coaching. And consequently, if you look at the coaching model for effectiveness, Hattie's work, it's research. He's taken many, many different practices in education, thousands of them, and rated them on their effectiveness of how do we change learning behavior? Coaching is one of them. And just being able to coach has been difficult because coaches are now teaching classes. Being able to have reading specialists, reading specialists are now. being able to have reading specialists, reading specialists are now covering whole classes, being able to have data dialogue. We don't have subs to pull the people, the whole teams in together to talk, so we kind of piecemeal it. So all of the practices about their practice, and teachers talking about their practice with other teachers is highly effective. Having a coach come in and assist me with my teaching to make sure that I instruct in the high value instructional practices works. Having the flexibility to work with curriculum within a parameter works, but all that happens at the building level. That isn't for Dina to go in there and say, because as you saw, where people are, whether it's regard to absences or not, are all over the place. They need to study their own data and have those. So the structure and supports are behind it in looking at addressing gaps and barriers, things like that. But just as our classroom teachers are getting subs, their small group MTSS, you put the highest need children with the most skilled teacher in reading, and when that most skilled teacher in reading is out, you have probably a sub come in who might have the least skilled in reading. So the whole way the system is designed has flaws in it during this time. Will we get through it? Yes. But those are some of the things. When we get back, we need to do an assessment, another one, of implementation protocols. That is a high value intervention. It just, you don't go to see, how's the teacher teaching? You go to see, how are the students learning? And are the things that are set up for high quality learning happening in this classroom? And if not, you have a discussion about it. It's not an evaluative piece, it is, okay, we're about, one third of our classrooms have implementation fidelity, or integrity, whatever you want to call it. And we just work to get all of them that way. But there's different reasons why. There's being a new teacher, you know, being a sub, a long-term sub, being somebody that's familiar with different practices and reteaching them. So there's quite a bit. So this is the path and the strategies that really the reading team and Jenny and her people put out, but it, it really is overlaid then on a principal in his or her school, and then it's overlaid on top of a grade level, and then they decide what they need, and then from that grade level, individual teachers decide, and then the cycle starts over again. But allowing students, and what we will get to when we have trend data, is that we really need to build capacity in all classrooms where there, where kids are learning and, and we're showing learning progress.
Okay, thank you. Other how questions? Forward-thinking questions? Member Jacob.
This wasn't one on my list, but it, it has come up since, I guess, and if we can't speak to it, we need to put it in a board connect, that's fine. But how do we, how are we challenging students who, who are exceeding expectations right now in the context of trying to make sure we're, we're meeting these goals with, with reading growth too? What does that look like?
Sure, that, that's a great question. And the what I need now time is actually an accelerated time as much as it has in, in intervention time. You can intervene when kids need it. And one of our four questions that we have as educators is, if you want to know what, you know, we want to improve student outcomes, so you need to know what are they learning? That's the standards. How do we know if they're learning it? That's the assessment. The next question is, what do we do when they're not learning what we think they should be learning? But there's a fourth question that says, what do we do when they already are? And that's why we keep track of growth, because no child, if, if I am already advanced and I'm not growing a year, there's a problem with that. That's specifically why MAP is such a valuable tool. And so some kids move classrooms to a higher grade level, some kids take zero hour classes, some kids receive that in win time, some kids receive it in ignite time, some kids move schools to get that. So there's varied ways, because it's a plan with a parent and a school and capabilities. But that, that is a great question, and the gap should not be made up by all students doing worse. I can tell you that. The gap needs to be moved up. All ships rise.
Member Lessons.
I do have a how question, and this stems from my own first grade students' experience, my experience with my student. Parents have access to a lot of information on Q, but, but as a parent, I didn't have access to the breakdown of those fundamental skills that maybe are measured in FastBridge. So how can we better communicate with parents to empower them to better understand the skills that their, their child, you know, needs work on, is accelerating?
Yeah, that actually is a great question. I, when I read that, I was like, shared that with the team, that that may be something, because FastBridge has a parent resource that says, hey, your kid should be doing this by this level. One of the successes of summer school that a principal shared wasn't that parents were involved in the school because they came in, it was that both the parent and the kid knew what the target was at the end of the week, and they reported back to them all the time. So they knew, oh, they're supposed to be reading this much per whatever, so parents would help them. But we, we'll take a look at that, because I know for Q, for other assessments, you have a parent resource, we'll see what we can do with FastBridge. But generally speaking, what, we spend a lot of time with at conferences, and I know that that has been a struggle as well because of absenteeism. Teachers that are in the primary grades, they really sit them down and say, this is what they should be doing. And, and some of the, the, the beauty of this is because parents then see their kid in relation to other kids and what they should be doing, so it's not personal to the teacher. It's, you know, because sometimes educators get, you know, people being aggressive because other people are emotional, but it, it removes them from it, saying, this is the outcome that we want, work with me to help your child get there. So that's a great idea, and, and I think if we can help educators that way, communicate that, that is perfect, just pulling them in, because those were things that were effective this summer.
I don't have a question, but I, I do have a request at some point, if we could really, if we could get a presentation on MTSS. There is a lot of, I get a lot of questions that basically see it as remediation, not remediation and acceleration. And I think if we could, because I, I think it's a beautiful framework, I think it works for kids, but I think we, I'd like to have a presentation on MTSS. And I'll convince another board member to join me on that quest. Yes, Member Wilson. Oh, okay. Oh, she was going to join me on that quest, thank you. All right.
Okay.
Any other questions? I want to thank. Thank you, Dr. Bishop. I want to thank you for taking, sharing all of, all of, answering all of our questions and presenting all the data. Oh, yes.
It's, it's not a question, it's a comment. I, I just wanted to thank you as well for the detailed information when it came to analyzing attendance regarding all of this information. So I, I just appreciate all of that detailed information, it was very helpful for me.
Thank you. And Madam President, we will get those slides out to you, and really, our deeper dive at our level occurred because of your questions. And so when you ask them, I'm like, well, I know attendance matters, it's always mattered, but how does it matter? And then we got some of those things, so it allowed us to then rethink on, on those, and, and just wanted to share that, that, that whole process is really what the power of, like, those data meetings are at schools, because it's, it's fun for them to discover, and they might say, oh, it might be because of this, we go try something, well, that didn't work, we start over again. It is just a learning process over and over again. And educators seek, when you go into education, you want a child to learn, and working together to find that, that beautiful piece of a child getting it, it is, is a gift and given back to teachers. And so I know that they, they care about it, so thank you.
Thank you very much. And at this time, I would like to have a motion to accept the report, the outcome monitoring reading proficiency for, that we just discussed.
Madam President, we accept the report on reading proficiency.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, moved in second that we accept the report on reading proficiency, guardrail number 1.1. Yes, Member Donnelly.
Could I ask the secretary to, to see if she could also provide us, just email us some of the slides that weren't in the actual printed packet? Because there were some useful slides there I'd like to have.
Yes, sir. Yes, Member Donnelly, we'll get those out to everybody. Thank you. That's what Dora mentioned as well, yes. We will get those out to board members. They are posted, but we will get them to you in an email. So that we have, it's been moved in second that we accept the report. Are there any opposition to accepting the report? Seeing none, the report is accepted as presented. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Bishop, and staff.
Yep. Big team, good team.
And so now that brings us to our first opportunity, let me make sure. Yes, our public comment section. So welcome to our first opportunity every evening for public comment. The board has set aside an hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting for public comment. Comments in excess of, that, if we had more than we could hear in the first hour, we would move them to our second opportunity at the end of our meeting. During public comment, board members will not answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is the public's time to speak and the board's time to listen. The school board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings through their comments. However, to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. ASD conducts public meetings under Robert's Rules of Order. These rules require the board and the public to be civil, respectful of each other's opinion and statements. Here are a few reminders. There is also at the door, we have a form that you could refer to as well. It is our audience participation guidelines. So here are a few other requirements, excuse me, under Robert's rules. Do not attack a speaker's motives. Speakers may point out what he or she believes to be the natural consequences of a board action, but may not engage in speech that personally attack others. Refrain from disturbing the meeting. And this equates to no cheering, applause, or outbursts. Unless you are testifying, you must be polite to the board and other speakers. Attendees will not be permitted to interrupt the business of the school board. No profanity or foul language. This is not the place, this space is a space of respect and civility. And please keep your masks on at all times, including during your testimony. Make sure your mask covers both your mouth and nose, unless you have a medical waiver. And if that is the case, you can see what, one of, you can see Mr. Brown in the back of the room. No waving of signs, flyers, or posters. If you have any handouts that you wish to share with the board, we welcome them, and you can give them to Katie, seated at my left, and she will make sure that we get them. So as the president of the board, it is my duty to enforce the rules of civility and decorum. As such, I have the authority to rule any speaker out of order for violation of these rules. Further, I will remove from the meeting anyone who does not heed these rules and fails to conduct themselves in a civil manner. And with that, I would like to welcome our audience tonight. Thank you for your patience early on. And our first speaker will be Katie Lloyd, telephonically. Okay, I don't see her, I'll try to come back to her. Next, telephonically, we have Danielle Kemp.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes.
Okay. Thank you to the board. My name is Danielle Kemp, retired Army Combat Officer and teacher here in the ASD, also a parent of two AS students, also the president and co-founder of the Alaska Coalition of BiPAC Educators. There are two things that I just want to ask the district about tonight. Teachers of color and curriculum. So what, first question, what is this administration's plan to recruit and more importantly, retain teachers of color? I haven't seen or heard of any plan, have you? Has anyone here listening seen or heard of a plan to get and keep BiPAC teachers? I hope the administration is, is not thinking that black and brown teachers are just kind of appear out of thin air, you know? Right now, teachers of color represent only 14% of all educators in a district where 62% of the kids are students of color. Where is the plan to increase that 14% to 20%? Then 30%? Then 40%? Then 50%? Then 62%? Where's the plan? And, you know, the, you know, the, the worker pool, I've always heard that excuse, you know, the worker pool of teachers of color is just not there. But that's all, it's the same excuse that we hear over and over and over again. You know, parents of color are tired of excuses, you just need to produce, get creative, solve it, please. Second, where is the plan to fix our curriculum inequities? BiPAC parents are sick and tired of our culture and our history being presented in the form of fairy tales. I'll say again, with clarification, taxpaying BiPAC parents are sick and tired of our culture and history being presented as fairy tales and not being taught at all. And where's the NESTA curriculum? We haven't received an answer for this simple question yet, at least for the past month and a half. You got to fix this. It's getting to the point of ridiculousness, a harm to our children kind of ridiculousness. But it seems, as the evidence has shown, that that makes goals and, and a plan for everything. You make goals and a plan for everything except for teachers of color and equitable curriculum. If I'm wrong, great, prove it, prove I'm wrong. All you need to do is just show us the plan and follow up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Next in person, we have Jessica Thomas. Welcome, Ms. Thomas. Yes, you have three minutes.
All right. Thank you, school board members and Superintendent Bishop for giving me this time to talk. Today, I wanted to talk to you guys about the contract for the teachers' union. Our mediation did not go well, and we are now headed for arbitration. This is huge for our students, for us teachers that are going through this at this time. Some of the main things, we talk about retaining teachers, we talk about having teachers in the classroom. Some of the big things that we really need is we need decent healthcare. We've got a good healthcare program. We need help with it. Some of our teachers at the beginning of this year took home $400 less in their paychecks because the price of healthcare went up, which is probably going to even skyrocket even more after all this. But it's gone up, we need help with subsidizing that. That takes a huge chunk out of our paychecks. Retirement, I am a tier three teacher, this is my second career, I didn't have a retirement with my first one. I wanted to be a teacher. I came after, I went to school, single parent, I did everything that I needed to do to be able to become a teacher and to be able to work in a classroom, and now I can't afford to ever retire. I will have to work probably until the day I die. I joke around about it a lot. I even had a principal station make me a little loft for me so that I can stay at school all the time. It's something that I shouldn't have to be worrying about. I shouldn't have to worry about if I'm ever going to be able to retire, that I can enjoy my later years, because I should have a decent retirement that's going to allow for that. Our salaries that we have, this is the main reason that I came here today. I am a master's degree teacher. I have been working with the school district for 10 years, and I just qualified for housing assistance. I shouldn't be qualifying for housing assistance. I was $6,000 a year under the. I was $6,000 a year under the income guidelines. I could make $6,000 more. And I still would have qualified for housing assistance as a master's degree teacher, working for our school district for 10 years. That's wrong. I shouldn't have to do that. I already got $120,000 in student loans that I have to pay off. But I was shocked when that happened. And I think people need to understand, as a general rule, we get decent money. I'm not saying we don't, but like me, I'm a single parent. I'm the only income in my household. I don't make enough. And that's really hard. The stress of it for my child, who's still trying to go through school, and what that puts on me, it shouldn't be happening. Nobody should have to go through that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jessica. Next, in person, we have Richard Goldstein. Richard? Okay, Richard's not here. Is Katie online? Nope. Let's go in person with Elizabeth Merz. Elizabeth Merz. M-E-R-T-Z. Okay. So we'll go back to the phones. Heather Land. Heather Land, star six to unmute. Can you hear us, Heather?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. You have three minutes. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm the parent of two students at an ASD elementary school. I pay taxes that support public school and your salaries. I wanted to start off by saying that we really appreciated the crushing blow a few weeks ago, right before the holidays, where we were told masking would be a choice. My children cried and begged not to go to public school and the decision was reversed. As we all know, the CDC finally admits after two years of this that cloth-based masks do nothing to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Even if they did prevent the spread, students must remove them to drink and eat, which then eliminates any protection they offer. The school board and teachers seem to worship this virus because following your so-called mitigation plan makes you feel heroic. I was present in person at the last board meeting and was utterly disgusted at the brainwashing, fear-mongering, and political nonsense this virus has caused in our school district. A young boy spoke about how he feels safer with a mask on rather than having to quote, "worry" about if the person next to him was vaccinated or not. I was blown away that we have let this get to a point that that is what our children are worried about. I couldn't even bring myself to stand up and speak because I was too busy being disgusted for all the support of these filthy masks that give you all a false sense of security and safety. In regard to your mitigation plan, I now understand that Alaska schools accepted upwards of $200 million of Federal Cares Act and ESSR money, which means you must adhere to a mitigation plan. What I am asking is that your plan be reviewed and updated immediately to reflect new information and changes. Nothing in ASD's mitigation plan prevents medical exemptions or parents' choice masking. The mitigation plan needs adjusting and less focus on case counts. I highly encourage that you adopt a model closer to the MAT2 Valley, where each school is looked at individually and not the entire organization when it comes to masking and mitigation procedures. You must admit with the new information over the last year that this plan is not ideal. Even right now, with the cases being high, the counts per individual schools are not alarming in the least. My heart aches for the parents of special needs, hearing impaired, and autistic children, and others who you refuse to accept medical waivers for. The parents of these children have stood in front of you crying and begging for it to stop. If even one child struggles to learn with a mask on, that should be enough for you to implement mask choice now. What about no student left behind? Clearly, that no longer matters as parents have told you the devastating effects of mask wearing on their children. People have left ASD in droves for private schools or homeschool simply to avoid the mask mandate. But I suppose that is what you want, right? You have been conditioned and manipulated to fear the virus, so you will comply. To the teachers who are tired of this and feel the same as I do, I ask that you stand up and say how you feel without a fear of retaliation. The cases with the new variant will soar quickly and hopefully curb quickly. I only hope that you will finally see reason when the surge is over and realize that no amount of masking or vaccines will prevent it. Masks do nothing to prevent the spread unless they're fit tested N95. We must learn to live with the disease and get our lives back to normal, as this is disrupted.
Thank you very much, Ms. Land. Thank you. Next, we have Nile Sherwood Williams, telephonically. I don't see him. Nile Sherwood Williams. In person, we have Rochelle Griffiths. Welcome. And you have three minutes. Thank you.
Rochelle Griffiths, Anchorage resident. On January 10th, 2022, at East High School, I heard adult sexual theme music on the intercom during the students' passing time. When I inquired about it to the front desk clerk, I was told, and I quote, "The music is to aid in motivating the students to get to class, and when it stops after playing for five minutes, they have two minutes to get to their class." The songs I heard were "I Will Follow You" by Imagine Dragons and "Beautiful Mistakes" by Maroon 5. The lyrics that came over the intercom were, "Beautiful mistakes I make inside my head. She's naked in my bed, and now we lie awake making beautiful mistakes." This type of music is inappropriate for the high school students and the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School, or ANCCS, which has elementary and middle school age students who are temporarily housed in East High School. ANCCS has been displaced from their previous school due to COVID since the ventilation system was uncovered to not be working. These young students are at the mercy of a high school and sadly are being exposed to very inappropriate sexual, adult-themed music. Mayor Bronson came by to visit ANCCS on January 5th and heard the inappropriate music. He was extremely upset. You may look up the lyrics yourself to "Beautiful Mistakes" by Maroon 5 and decide for yourself if any child under 18 years old should listen to it. Also, a Justin Bieber song came on over the intercom. "I got my peaches down in Georgia, that's that shit." Yes, the curse word played out, and someone in the front office heard it and shut it off. When I spoke with the East High School staff, Mrs. Hill, she told me that she has been playing this type of music for three years, and I am the first to raise concern about it. I then asked her if East runs the lyric she plays past the parents. She said no. I asked, "Does East have a PTA?" She said no. Why aren't the parents being involved in their children's school life and consulted? My question is, which other schools in Anchorage are exposing their students to these vulgar lyrics? This genre of music is highly inappropriate for young children and young adults trying to attend school. These students have enough on their plate and should be focusing on schoolwork, not relationships, and being encouraged to have sex at a young age. We must guard what we listen to as adults. We have a responsibility to protect our youth and their minds. Parents, show up to your children's school, ask questions, and get involved. We need to get ANCCS back into their own school right away. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Griffiths. Next, telephonically, we have Dr. Paula Williams. Dr. Williams, it's star six to unmute.
Good evening.
Good evening. You have three minutes and welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Good evening, Superintendent, as well as the Anchorage School Board. I am Dr. Paula Williams. I'm a proud member of the Alaska Black Caucus and current chair of the Alaska Black Caucus Education Committee. I am definitely standing with the Anchorage Education Association and our educators in their effort to secure a suitable contract for our teachers that ensure the students and the educators' safety, protection of the educators' time that will allow them to develop and deliver high-quality instructional feedback with a collaborative approach to fit every student's educational need. To collaboration with educators and the ASD leadership, we are advocating for a competitive compensation package that attracts and retains the best educators, especially educators of color. I'm also totally against dropping the requirement of masking in the midst of this Omicron virus. It would be pure recklessness on our behalf. As an intelligent people, we are too knowledgeable to become a weapon against ourselves as well as those around us. True, as Americans, we are the freest people in this world. Yet without freedom, we must be responsible and considerate, one of the other. This Omicron virus has caused an unprecedented number of infections across the state of Alaska this past month alone. Almost daily, we have students, teachers, and staff calling out illegal school seats from this various COVID viruses. We must take more serious than ever the importance of public safety by wearing masks, getting vaccinated, boosted, and taking adequate precautions for our safety and the safety of others. And taking these measures will ensure that businesses, schools, and communities remain open. We all want our sore knuckles, and thank you to everyone determined to live our best lives, putting an end to the spread of COVID virus by using all precautionary measures available to us. And I want to thank you this evening for your time.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Next, in person, we have Louis Embriani. Thank you for coming. And you have three minutes, Mr. Embriani.
For the record, my name is Louis Embriani. I'm here today to voice an official complaint against the Anchorage School Board.
Miss Embriani, can you need to put your mask back on, please? Thank you.
I'm here today to voice an official complaint against the Anchorage School Board. If not resolved tonight, I'll be submitting a written complaint tomorrow. Also, if there are any lawyers in the room, listen up. My complaint is that the Anchorage School District is acting outside of their powers as granted by the Alaska State Statutes and the Municipal Code. The school board's powers to create and regulate their own policy is granted under Alaska State Statute 14.08.101, subsection 5, and Municipal Code 6.03, subsection 1. However, there's nothing in code or statute that allows school boards to implement or create health measures. We may be in a home-rule city, but the only person that can issue directives or orders related to the health in the municipal government is the mayor. Even then, there needs to be probable cause as outlined in Anchorage Municipal Code 3.80.065. Even after probable cause has been established, a person can still refuse the medical treatment. This is clearly written in code. Currently, there is no emergency in Anchorage or the state, and there is no emergency ordinance or emergency order in Anchorage or the state that requires the use of masks. This means there is no reasonable expectation for a mask mandate to be implemented in Anchorage-area schools since there's not already an existing law or ordinance requiring the use of masks. You are a division or a branch, or you are not a branch of the municipal government. You are a department of it. I was in front of this board on August 17th, 2021, and gave you the definition of masks as defined by the FDA. I can provide you with that again if you'd like because it hasn't changed, and it's still classified as a medical device. You do not have legal authority to require anyone to wear any type of medical device for any reason. Your policy of forcing parents to send their kids to school masked is outside of your authority. This forced application of medical devices causes the parents to choose between two rights that they are entitled to. They are forced, and you are bullying them into choose. Do they give up their children's right to attend a school, which is granted under Alaska Statute 14.03.080? Or they must give up their parental right of informed consent for a medical treatment of their minor children? Forcing parents to make this choice is unacceptable and outside of your authority. I've already filed one lawsuit against the municipality, and I'm ready to do it again. Please look up Louis Embriani et al. v. Austin Quinn-Davidson. It was filed, it was heard, and I have no problem doing it again.
Thank you, Mr. Embriani. Next, in person, we have Ryan Kennedy. Welcome, Mr. Kennedy, you have three minutes.
Let's see. Well, I wanted to comment on the monitoring report. I was going over the report, and I read about the guardrails. And according to the ASD website, the board directs the superintendent to, quote, "not leave student groups underrepresented in lottery-application-based programs." And it directs the superintendent "will not operate without a plan to develop a diverse or culturally responsive workforce." And, well, these directives strike me as illegal. You know, they just sounded fishy to me. So I looked up, you know, so I looked up at the Anchorage Charter, and the Anchorage Charter reads, "Article 2, Bill of Rights, Among the Rights Guaranteed by the Charter: The right to opportunities in housing, public accommodations, employment, and education without regard to race, religion, sex, color, national origin, marital status, or physical disability, and the right to an equal rights commission at the municipal level and in aid thereof." So it strikes me that this direction to the superintendent to not leave underrepresented groups in the program as in violation of the charter. Because, and the second directive is because it's basically saying, you know, it's saying, I mean, how would, okay, if these charter programs, if it directs the superintendent to say, hey, there's underrepresented groups, well, how would you modify, how would you remedy, how would she remedy that? She would have to discriminate based on race, right? So it strikes me as illegal. And the second directive is particularly, more particularly troubling because it directs the superintendent to develop a diverse or culturally responsive workforce. Now, how is a superintendent supposed to do that? They have to discriminate, right? But that's the legal end of the charter. Because the charter says, it says that you not use race or religion or all those things as a criteria. And so, so, you know, basically, that guardrail is directing the superintendent to make hiring decisions and using race as a consideration. And the charter says you can't do that. And again, so I looked up, I looked up regard, you know, it says, without regard to race. And so, what does that mean? So Webster's considers, the Webster's dictionary says, "consider." It says, it can't use, okay, Webster's defines the word regard as to consider. So I would think that to be lawful, you should, the board should not use race as any consideration. And it shouldn't, to my mind, it shouldn't even use it in the, you know, in any of its documents or anything. And ideally, it should use.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Next, telephonically, we have Brian Shalafour. I do not see him. Let's go back up to Katie Lloyd. I do not see her. Richard, did Richard Goldstein show up yet? Richard? And Mr. Williams, Nile Sherwood Williams. Elizabeth Merz. Okay, they're not in the queue. And then we have Dustin Darden. Oh, he's not here either. Okay, thank you. That concludes our public comment section. We thank you all for sharing your thoughts with us. And that brings us back to our agenda. We are now at item E, Consent Agenda.
Madam President, I move that we approve the items as listed on the amended consent agenda.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved in second that we approve the consent agenda. Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 7. All in favor? Well, first of all, are there any objection to approving the consent agenda as amended? Seeing none? That agenda is approved. And now, item F, we have no items. That brings us to item G. That brings us to item G, non-action items. Member Lessons, did you have something to, were you gonna pull something?
Yes, please. I'd like to pull number memorandum 069 from non-action for purposes of discussion.
Okay. Okay, so we pulled item 069 for discussion, and we also have, we also have, we've added item 4 underneath that, which is ASD memorandum number 80. All right, so do you want to?
Yeah, I had, when I was reviewing it, there were four things that kind of popped up, and I thought it would be good to just bring them up. I noticed that a couple of pieces of information was maybe missing from page 9. It gives us the overall enrollment this year, but there is nothing filled out for intensive needs or any zone exempt. So I thought maybe that could be fleshed out if there's more data to fill in there. I did have a question. Maybe the biggest question was, reflects interaction at the Anchorage Assembly meeting last week during the bond discussion, and I was aware that there may be a more recent tentative drawing than the one that's included in this document. And I wonder if the administration could elaborate on any more recent parking lot changes that might have arisen since the, the January 4 date.
Through the President to member Lessons, I am going to request Tom Roth to respond.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Through, through the board president to member Lessons. So specifically to, to member Lessons' question. As part of the, the design for the inlet view replacement, there, there, there is a traffic control plan. It's, it's a fairly inclusive plan. The, the traffic route, the drop-off route, the emergency route, empties out onto inlet, inlet place in front of the home of one of the neighboring residents. Based on a, a request by an assembly member asking that we would evaluate or draft a, a proposal that would actually exit from the school onto 13th Street, which is the East-West Road, if you come off of Minnesota, East-West Road that goes right into the center of the inlet view site. That we did, in fact, draft a schematic. I asked Mr. Paul Burrell, who's the architect, who's actually here in the room this evening, to do that. That we, we, we have that, and our intent is to introduce that schematic to the building design committee for consideration. It would also need to be reviewed by the traffic department, but that's where we are with regards to that.
And the follow-up?
Yeah, so the follow-up would be just a, maybe a procedural. This is a non-action item. We would see this in two more weeks as an action item. It's a 95% rendering. If there are, if, if the building design committee and everyone else sort of approves it, do we need to then re-approve things? Or like, how, how live is the 95%?
The update will come to you, just to share, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else on memorandum 69?
I did. I wanted to say, I learned a lot about the concept of ventilation recently, and I appreciated a comment within the document that CO2 sensors will be employed to ensure adequate ventilation rates are achieved. And does that mean that we'll have CO2 detectors in every classroom? That seems like a good forward thinking. I see a nod.
I see Mr. Burrell confirmed with the north-south head nod that yes, there would be CO2 detectors in the other rooms.
And then I have one, thank you. I have one final question. Is the kitchen going to be capable of doing more than heating food? And I, I ask that because my sense from a couple of years ago is that ASD had a Going Green initiative, and a lot of our schools can't do any more than heat food. And if we're gonna be putting in a brand-new school, would this kitchen be able to do something other than heat and eat?
Through, through the President, if I might, and I don't know that we've got to that level of detail. Do you want to speak to that, Paul?
He's nodding. Welcome, Paul.
Yep, hello.
Man?
I can answer that question pretty easily. So we have coordinated through ASD CPNC with the Food Service Department, and they've provided input on the kitchen design. So that's, what's shown in the documents is based on that input, and it is basically just a warming kitchen. There is not anything more than that at this time. There is a dishwasher so they can wash good, or wash plates and utensils, so they don't have to use styrofoam. But that's where we're at right now with the food department, our food service department.
So if I, if I might just elaborate on that. So, so the, the intent to Mr. Burrell's point, so we, we generally feed in, in schools through this system whereby, at the Student Nutrition Center, our, our staff prepare meals which are heated at the school, and they're individual meals. What we are aspiring to get to is a situation where we're, one, using reusable utensils and trays, but also serving from a, a methodology where instead of just individual reheated meals, that we're preparing meals at the central kitchen that are served to students using the reusable utensils. That's why we have a washing capability in, in these, in these school designs and plans. So that's the intent moving forward.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Paul. Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. In one of our meetings late last year, I had asked for a report from our building design committee for them to check in with us at one of our early meetings this year. I'm wondering if that's still calendared and what the status of that might be.
Good question. I don't know that Katie and I have it calendared, but we can do so.
Yeah, I'm still very much interested in, and I.
And that would be a routine update that you would want?
I, I, I'm not gonna feel comfortable voting on this until I hear from the building design committee as to how things are going now, if they've added a couple of members and how the meetings have, have kind of gone since. Yeah, I think that that would be useful information from my perspective.
So between now and, the only opportunity we have between now and our next meeting would be a work session, or a committee meeting, or a special meeting. So I'll get back to you on, I hear what you're saying, and I'll get back to you. I'd work with the administration to do an update. Mr. Roth, did you have any thoughts? I saw your.
Through, through the President, just, just for clarification. So the, I, I recall the discussion. I guess my, my, my question is, are we requesting that the building design committee schedule an exceptional meeting? We did publish the building design committee's schedule. My understanding that there were several board members that actually participated in those. That we did, we did, in fact, add two members to the building design committee who, who live adjacent to the site. So I guess I'm just not quite clear what member, member Jacobs is, is requesting.
Madam President, if I might, I can clarify.
Sure.
Thank you. So, sure, at, at our meeting, and I think it was in late November, early December, I asked specifically to hear back from representatives of the building design committee as to kind of the impact of adding the additional members made. There were concerns about how, how certain elements of the neighborhood felt included in the process. I was hoping to hear kind of those tweaks to the building design committee process, what improvement that made in having that update from them. So that commitment, as far as I recall, was made. There wasn't any objection to it, so just a matter of follow-through at this point.
So, and I guess my understanding, member Jacobs, was updates and board connect. But what you're, so I wasn't seeing that as a separate meeting. I was seeing that as updates, just an update and board connect.
Yeah, I had specifically asked for representatives to, to come to one of our meetings if possible, that their, the building design committee isn't interested for whatever reason, and board connect is their preferred method to communicate or email. Perfectly fine, but I wanted to give them that platform if they so chose. Thank you.
Dr. Bishop. That would be my question, that we could just pose the questions you have to the committee and let them come to you. I mean, was it you or the board? I mean, because we could publish the information to the board.
I would see value in the information, Madam President and Dr. Bishop. If, if I'm the only board member, that's certainly fine. I assume others might be interested as well.
We will put their requests to, on the items of, did they, was there any update of those questions that you just sent?
Yeah, I'll be happy to follow up with an email.
Okay, if you have an email, then we'll pose it, we'll send it to them. And I'll get back to the board on, or if you want to send your questions to me or Katie, that'll be great. Okay, let's, the other item that we pulled was item, any other discussion on 069? Thank you. Next, we're gonna move down to item 4, memo 80. Mrs. Donley, did you want to say anything specific, or? I think, I, I think you just wanted it moved, but I did want to see if you had any, any other comments there.
Well, it's a, it's a non-action item on the agenda now. Obviously, I, I voted against this the last time it came before our, our board. I didn't intend on speaking to it tonight, but the reason I voted against it was I thought it would, I disagreed with the three replacement schools on the six-year plan. And I supported doing major remodels for those schools, but not total tear downs and replacements. And it's tens of millions of dollars that I believe could be utilized for other, I believe, more essential projects spread out among the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on memo 80? Seeing none? Are there any people in the audience that wants to testify on memo 80? Or 60? I'm sorry? Oh, I'm not there yet. I'll be right with you. Okay, we're, we're almost there. Seeing no further comments on item G4. We are now at public testimony. Now you may come. And please state your name. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you for indulging me on the miscommunication. Good evening to the board and the superintendent and the audience. My name is Rachel Reese, and I am a registered candidate for the school board for seat B. And I'm here this evening to express my growing concern about the continuation of the mask policy. It affects me personally as the parent of a disabled child, but it also affects all the parents across ASD. They are completely disenfranchised. Teachers and school employees are experiencing professional fatigue with the additional bureaucratic requirements, and our students are caught in the middle. It's an untenable situation. It is long past time we set aside the political agenda and remember why we are even here, which is to educate children, not push agendas on public health policy. The school board is here to set policy while representing this community, and the community has spoken out many times that they don't want this. You are leaving children behind. It shows in your numbers you spoke about earlier this evening. As elected officials, you are supposed to be community leaders. When I was in the military, I learned leadership starts at the top. You set the tone, and the tone you're setting is that you're deaf to your community. You are not hearing us. You are not hearing your students. You're not even hearing your own employees. So I'm here tonight to ask you to revisit this policy and implement it as parent choice. In closing, I would like to remind you, you can partner with us as their parents because they are our children, but you cannot replace us, and that's what these policies are doing. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Reese. Is there any other public comment? Anyone else wish to testify? Welcome. Can you give us your name?
My name is Denise Ledwell. This is spur of the moment. I have nothing prepared. But I would like to, first of all, thank each and every one of you. You guys have a very hard job. I want to thank all the teachers that do the work that they do. But I also want to bring a very important thing to the forefront. You guys spoke earlier about choices in the classroom. If you have a student that's excelling or falling behind, or all these different things, you guys provide options for them. You provide choices. You provide a way for them to get the best education possible. I, as a parent, and many other parents in this community, would like that same choice. As this board, I have been here a few times. I watch online usually. I have witnessed many times a feeling where you know what's best. Many times, parents have said their concerns, they've asked questions, you don't want to hear it. I don't want to believe that. I want to believe that you got into your job because you care about our students. I want the choice to either mask my child or not. I want the choice to send her to a private school, religious school, whatever I want to do. I am her parent. They are their children's parents. And I don't want to hear anymore about, well, it's because of this reason or that reason that all these children have all these issues going on in their education. We are their parents. You are their educators. Educate them in their curriculum, and that's it. Let us parent them. That's all I ask. Thank you for what you do and continue to listen to us and work with us, be our partners, be our friends. That's all we want to do. We just want to work with you.
Can you spell your last name? Thank you for coming.
L-E-B-L-O-W-E.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item I, Superintendent Update.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to share our new web portal on the dashboard for COVID cases. Again, my letter communicated that continued use of paper documentation sent home was problematic, and access to where we stand in schools was needed, better access. So we're just gonna call it up live if we can, so that Ashley can direct us and talk about the different pieces and changes.
Good evening. I'm just gonna walk you through the new dashboard on the website, so everyone is familiar with how to find the new information. So this is just the ASD homepage, and the first step you'll do is click on the COVID-19 info, that blue banner to the left. And then next, you're gonna want to click on Check School Status. And this is what is, has been on our website, so most people should already be familiar with this. And this is total case counts per school for the entire district. And you can see there has the total staff and students, and then the active COVID-19 cases. So that's anyone that is currently positive as of right now. It's live data. And then the change that we made. And then the change that we made, and if you can scroll up just a little bit to the banner, so you'll see right there it says, click on a school to view cases by grade level. So this is the new change that we made. And Kathy, if you actually want to click on Alpenglow, because it's a good example to talk through. So you see there at Alpenglow, they have 12 active cases. And this actually changed from when I was just looking at it when the school board meeting started. And then you scroll down, and then it has the positive cases by grade level there. And if you see at the top, it says, these numbers do not include staff cases. So if you do some kind of quick math there, you can see that there are eight positives, but on the dashboard on the front page, it said 12. So that means that the four other cases are staff. And that's really just to provide more clarity for parents at home in terms of really the spread of cases in terms of students at the school. So that's the new dashboard. It's pretty easy to navigate. But if you have any, any questions, we can talk through that. And I have Mr. Roth here, and then I believe Kate is here to answer any questions that we might have.
I see, Member Holloman?
Yes, on the old dashboard, it had student attendance rates or absentee rates. I'm wondering if that data is no longer available.
Absentee rates? I don't think we, on the COVID-19 dashboard, I don't believe we ever showed absentee rates.
Not on the COVID.
No. We have it on our other dashboard.
You mean on the other, the main data dashboard?
There was a dashboard that showed whether or not classrooms were closed, but also had our absentee rates.
We haven't been able to put this. And what we found is, we could publish absentee rates of adults and students, but when we've drilled down, and we'll share again, that to actually find out why they were absent, whether it was COVID or another illness or a trip, that really takes significant amount of teacher input. And I am reluctant to ask teachers to do one more thing. So we have case or school-wide absenteeism that we'll share. But to break it down, we found this problematic with staffing. And one of the things, just to share with you, when Whaley first closed down the first week, I was concerned, because there was communication from a teacher from another school that made comment on that. But when I made the decision, the information that that teacher had was never in the conversation. So what we did was work with the principal to drill it down. And we found out that, no, it's actually scheduled, majority of them, well, not majority, but they were split between people being caught out of town in traffic, well, like air traffic. There were COVID, unexpected COVID cases. There was a death in the family, and two people out for medical. And so of the staffing, we really had to dig down, spend some time, why is this, why is that? So same thing for students. We've just, to be transparent in the reporting, we just did it at this level, because we're not determining, like, we just haven't gone on a school-by-school basis in general.
It wasn't differentiated. But it's also Matt Su and Kenai did the same thing on their dashboards. It is just a general number, and kids could be out for any number of reasons. But it just gave you an idea of how many kids are actually in the building. Because some of the absentee rates were quite high in the other districts.
We just didn't want to, I'm sorry, we didn't want to communicate something that, because people would relate on the COVID dashboard, that that absence was due to COVID. And we didn't want that link to happen without being transparent about the true data. And it takes teachers to find out, to call parents, to call this, or someone to follow up if we don't have the information. So we just decided that the value of that wasn't worth the time, but.
I wouldn't want us to do that. But thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Any other questions on the COVID upgrade? Thank you, guys. Oh, I'm sorry.
Member Wilson? I just wanted to clarify how often the numbers are updated. So this is actually real-time data. We have what we call the Pandemic Tracking and Charting System that I presented on last school year. So anytime a nurse updates a case, it automatically updates on the website. So it's kind of backend work that the nurses are doing at the school level.
Thank you. Okay. Did you have a?
And just to further, Madam President, to add to that, they're receiving information around the clock, because when the test is done, you know, it's QR-coded. The tests in Alaska do reside at the state of Alaska. And every morning, we get an update if a parent doesn't share. Now that we have antigen testing as well, some are calls that are confirmed by parents, but some are, we're looking off of a list that's given to us in the morning about COVID-positive. And so I just wanted to share that, because there's still some interest in antigen testing. And the ability to do both is, is pretty much zero for our nurses. And so ubiquitous antigen testing. So we would, just something would have to give because of that backend work. And we would just have to change our procedures, which probably will happen in the future as we move through high case counts. But it, it takes the nurses, as she said, to back in. And all night long, those things are coming through because of our Beechtree testing sites. They work through the night.
Okay, not seeing any more questions. I thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Anything else, Dr. Bishop? Is that your report?
That was the report, Madam President. Thank you. I think I've said enough.
Thank you. That brings us to item J, School Board and Administration Comments. I'll start with Member Higgins. No, it's not on. Push the mouth. Is it? There you go. It's on now.
Okay. I know I sound better with it off, but that's okay. I'm going to try it anyway. I want to just highlight, from my standpoint, what I heard from testimony tonight, because I really do try to actively listen. And the first step to that is kind of acknowledge what was being said, and then providing a response. And there were several issues there that were raised that I thought were very interesting and had me looking into the issues. One is, of course, effectiveness on recruiting teachers and diversity. And it was also linked in with the issue of under-representation in lottery and application, and the two guardrails with that. And I think it would be interesting to have a discussion about that in a report from the superintendent, just what, how is that being met? I know that there are limitations that you can't discriminate, but there were steps that you can be taken. After half a century of working in human resources, I do understand the role of affirmative action and how effective it is. I'm interested in trying to find out what the administration has done to try to ensure that we don't have groups underrepresented lottery-application-based programs. So those, those two guardrails, I think, would be a great follow-up. The questions that have been asked multiple times now in different board meetings are very legitimate ones to do. And I think they're very important. I mean, we've identified them as a guardrail, the board has. And, and there's an expectation from the public in regards to that. So I really appreciate that. I know that we're hearing again from the teacher's contract. My issue, my biggest concern is the message that somehow that the board or the administration is not concerned with that, that we're not focused in regards to it. I'm very concerned about morale. I'm very concerned about retention. I know that others are too. I appreciate what all the staff members are doing in ASD. And I don't want any message other than that to go out, because that's really the case. So just my appreciation for unbelievably tough times the last few years, and it's continuing, and the job that's being done in spite of it. There's also a comment that was made that I really want to comment back on, that the board knows what is best. I do a lot of management training. And I tell new managers that we've hired you to make mistakes. Somebody has to decide when you're in the middle of the road, whether you're going to go to the right or you're going to go to the left. But staying in the middle of the road is unacceptable. So somebody with the amount of information you get is not 2 plus 2. Everybody knows that's 4. It's X plus Y. And you're making decisions with it. And I am always focused on the issue of what's going to impact kids the best. That's always what it comes down to. I don't have the answers. But somebody has to make those decisions. And I try to get as much facts as I can in regards to it. I'm somewhat concerned when I get emails that provide misinformation, or false information, or quotes that are inaccurate. And I'm wondering, okay, how is the public evaluating this or not? But I go in and I look at the research. I saw one recently that Mr. Holloman presented in response with the actual quotes. And it provided information that was different than the information being provided. And that's part of our job, is research it, find out what the facts are, to the degree we can make the decision. In our case, at least with mine, I'm trying to base mine on the best scientific evidence on some issues. And on other cases, I'm just looking at outcomes. And if the outcomes are not good, how are we going to improve it? And if they weren't improving, how are we going to do that, even if they are good? But the idea that we know, the board knows what's best, I think, I'm speaking for myself, but I feel confidence it's for the whole board. We don't know what's best. We know that we have to make tough decisions every day, that we make decisions, and we're doing it based upon our best information. And that's the reason why the public input is important. And that's the reason why what we got elected to do is hopefully make a difference. Watch more kids graduate, make more kids academically prepared, giving them more choices. I fought in the past for career technology. And I like to think that, like, when the first time I was on the board, it went from 60 to 80%, I think about how many of those kids are going to have a different life because of that, and how many of their kids are going to have a different life because they have that high school diploma. So don't have the answers, but I do believe in setting high goals. And I do appreciate the questions that are being raised, whether it's, whether we mask or we don't. I'm basing it on science, but I'm not happy wearing a mask, and I wear it all day long, because I have to, just from a safety standpoint, working in a medical field, has to be done. I will comment too on the inappropriate music. I don't know what actually took place. I know that the administration looks into that sort of thing. My only concern in that area is to make sure that we have a system when you run into a barrier at the high school or middle school, elementary at the principal level, you clearly understand where to raise that level after that. So it's a clear process. Not the superintendent, because that's, that may be something people go to, but there's a process where other people are supervising it. And somehow, if we communicate that better, I think some of these issues and concerns will get the kind of attention they need and be addressed in a positive way. Because we, our boss is the employees, and that's who we work for. And having that type of feedback, whether they're students, whether they're staff, or whether it's just the general public, is really valuable information, and I appreciate it. So with that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Member Holloman?
I'm going to make the unusual step of agreeing with some of Member Higgins' comments. But we really do try to look at all the letters that come in. And we are getting what I would call some direct misinformation. And a number of letters echo that. They say the CDC has determined that cloth masks are useless. But I can't find that on the CDC site anywhere. They did make the comment that cloth masks are the least effective out of the various masks. But they never made a statement, to my knowledge, that they don't do something. A number of people reference comments attributed to Dr. McLaughlin with the state. We had the opportunity on Friday in a Zoom interview to ask him directly. His comment was, he has no idea how anyone construed his remarks that way at all. And in some cases, people are sending articles and citing them with links, saying this shows that masks don't do anything. And when you go read the actual article, it does establish that masks have an effect. It is a tough thing. I don't think any of us want to have kids wear a mask. And, and I'm also baffled by the idea that it's political. I, I don't see political gain either way with a mask mandate or without. But protecting children's health in public school is something that we do all the time. As someone that spends a lot of time in the classroom, the health of the kids in front of me, their immediate safety and their long-term safety. And I say this as a technology teacher that provided common touch surfaces for hundreds of kids a day. And you watch them share their soft drinks. You watch them share their gum without even touching it with their fingers sometimes. You watch them wipe their nose and start piping again. Schools have a public health problem, and trying to control that with kids is something we do. It's just part of what we do. The master temporary, I'm hearing a lot of people's, medical folks say they think we may be seeing the end in a few weeks. I, I hope so. I can't wait. But, but in the meantime, as we are experiencing, once again, the biggest spike in cases we've ever seen, don't want schools to be a vector for transmission. I think we're all gratified that children, or some of the people that suffer the least consequences, the least severe cases. But we do have a responsibility to try to tamp down the number of cases that move through our buildings. That's all we're trying to do. There's not any other agenda I can imagine that's attached to it. So I hope people, again, try to look at all the information that's out there. Masks help slow the spread. I wish they could do more. They, they don't prevent it. They don't prevent any particular individual from getting it or not. But of our 40,000 kids, we assume that some number of them aren't getting it on any given day if we keep this policy in place. Hopefully, that will change soon, and we can all, all stop worrying about it. I do want to say also, I know the administration heard the comments about the lyrics. I do hope they'll investigate and report back to the board on that situation. Things happen. And kids sometimes will request music or be in a position to request music. Adults don't always listen to it. You can't always easily understand the lyrics. Again, as someone that worked with technology, I faced that as a classroom battle. But need to be a work to it. And, and if what happened, if what was described happened, we need to make sure it doesn't happen again, and that there's just some sort of a review and monitoring of things like that. I appreciate the parent who brought it to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you. And that also came in an, in an email. Dr. Bishop, if you want to.
Yes, thank you. Just for the board's regulations, nobody else has to speak to this. As you know, the process for the board is that when complaints are made, that we look into it, and then we report it to you. So that's perfunctory, and that's happened. For this particular one, not only did, the issue was first, it wasn't brought up to either principal until, from one principal to the other, that they liked it or didn't like it. Immediately when it was done, the people involved worked together to solve the problem. They select the music now, as well as, when we found out about it, Tom worked with his people to try to limit the space in the alternate building. It was also said that the board put them there. Nobody cares about them. In fact, it was just the opposite. The building did have ventilation issues, and we did not want to put children and staff back in the building. So we made space while we're presently seeking an alternative place to stay. The parent felt as though last week, we could do nothing more, that things were satisfactory. So tonight was just a redemonstration of sharing it out loud. But I would hope, I'm not sure the board's interested in sharing it out loud again, but I just want to share that it'll be updated to you about what we do and up timely, and that this particular parent was satisfied with the work done by the principals and administration.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Member Wilson?
So I appreciate a lot of the previous comments, but I will not reiterate. I'll keep it short. I, I just want to share my appreciation for the continued commitment of all of our ASD staff. I know you guys are working hard. I, I see it, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Shaw?
I just want to say I appreciate the mask mandate being lengthened out and with no end date, because I know myself, I tested positive for COVID. no end date, because I know myself, I tested positive for COVID, that I was close contact the Saturday before, when a break ended, I tested negative twice, and then I went to school for two classes, went to go get another test. And they're like, oh, like, you saw symptoms, you should go home. I was like, all right, like, that's fair. And then that next day, I tested positive. And then I had to, since I was already, like, pre-quarantined, I, like, finished up my quarantine. So I definitely appreciate it and think it was a smart move, especially with no end date, because we don't know, there's no end dates of when spikes like this are going to end, especially with spring break coming up.
Thank you, Ms. Shaw. Let's hop over to Member Jacobs.
Thank you, Madam President. As always, I want to express appreciation for those who take time to come out and connect with us at meetings. Upcoming opportunities to engage with board activity tomorrow at 3:30 is our communications subcommittee meeting. 4:30 PM is governance. Finance is 12 PM on the 26th, and then the 27th at 5:30 PM is the second board leadership webinar, which I understand was well-received and attended the first edition last week. No other comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you mention the town hall for tomorrow, that we have the 20th? Not tomorrow. When is the 20th? Thursday?
I did not.
Okay. So we, we got the town halls coming up. So lots of ways to engage. Thank you, Member Jacobs. Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to note that yesterday was Martin Luther King Day, and I believe all Americans can learn from Dr. King's legacy, including that words have the power to spark positive and important change. And Dr. King famously said, "The time is always right to do what is right. And the time is always right to speak up for what you believe in." Accordingly, I made a note of some quotes from Dr. King and things I believe. And I believe that while pop culture, critical race theory advocates such as Mr. Kendi disparage, actually disparaged in his book, Dr. King's advocacy of equality, and instead advocated in favor of racial discrimination to achieve equity, I stand with Dr. King's dream of equality and opportunity, and equality of treatment for all of us. And Dr. King famously said, "I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will be judged not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." And unfortunately, critical race theory is advocated by Mr. Kendi and many others, is just the opposite of Dr. King's dream of colorblindness, and actually calls for discrimination based on race. And you can go to page 19 of Mr. Kendi's How to Be an Anti-Racist and see the proof of that. Dr. King also said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And my belief is that holding some Americans guilty for the acts of people in the past of a certain race is clear injustice." The U.S. Constitution, Article 3, Section 3, specifically prevents corruption of blood for this very reason, even when it comes to something as serious as treason. And Dr. King also said, "We must live, learn to live together as brothers, or perish together as fools." And my belief is that critical race theory is a Marcus construct intended to divide Americans against themselves and weaken our great nation. And actually, I also identified one of my very favorite quotes from Dr. King. And it said, "All labor that uplifts humanity has dignity and importance and should be undertaken with painstaking excellence." And I certainly agree with that. And I would add that labor should be fairly compensated whenever possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. Member Lesens?
Sure, thank you. So this is kind, I'm going to bring together a response to a comment about guardrails, and actually the Martin Luther King comment. So thank you for that, Member Donnelly. I wanted to make sure the members of the public know that the district tonight, we accepted our first guardrails report on the fact that the superintendent will not be allowing underrepresented groups to be, will not leave student groups underrepresented in our lottery and application-based programs. And there's a wonderful synopsis of where we're at. I appreciate that there was data that's gathered, so we can understand where we're at, and that one of the key next steps is a listening strategy to understand what are the obstacles that families face when it comes to them not being a part of it. And so we know, for instance, that our Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander student groups, Asian students, English language learners, and Black students are significantly underrepresented. So now we know, we need to figure out how we can connect with them, let them know more about the program. So I appreciate that this is there. I do hope that this will be posted on our Goals and Guardrails website. And I think that this work bends ASD towards justice in that long arc, that Dr. King arc, the long arc towards justice, yes.
It's long.
And separately, I do, I want to echo Member Wilson's comment about thanking staff. There's just so much good that's happening in our schools right now, curricularly and extracurricularly. Our elementary students are headed towards the district Battle of the Books competition next week. There's so much staff time that goes into that process. And I wish every competitor a hearty good luck in that, in that battle. There are other competitions that are engaging our kids. I was invited down the road to a We the People, a civics competition or event. That's happening. I know our Ignite students, they're doing extracurricular activities, or curricular activities. There's just, there's just so much good. And I know our staff continue to, to work with, with the intent that every student can succeed. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Member Lesens. Dr. Bishop, did you have any comments, closing comments?
No, Madam President. I'm not sure.
What about staff? Nobody in the gallery? I would like to take a minute just to, do just a moment of silence for Macon Roberts. His, he was a board member back in the 90s. He was also a mentor and a friend. He passed away, actually, in November, but his celebration of life was just recently. And so I'd just like for us to honor him with a moment. He loved serving kids. He loved serving, period. But he really loved serving kids. So if we could just have a moment of silence for Macon. And our hearts and prayers are with his family as they navigate this difficult time. Again, I want to thank the staff as well. The work is, I mean, those of you who are subbing, I know you're subbing, and you're not getting your work done. I hope, I hope you're not stressing out over that. But I, if I were in your shoes, I'd be totally stressed. Because you got, you got, you know, you're doing good, but it's coming at a cost, not just, you know, health-wise, but it's coming at a cost that you're not getting what you need to have done. And we, so we know. I mean, we recognize that, and we appreciate that. And with that, I think I'll entertain a adjourn.